You can tell the weather's getting better. Everybody's energy level is up. And it is 5:30, and it is time to begin regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for February 26, 2018. I believe we're all here, so I'll call us all to order. And I'll ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner J. H. Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll bow to the one who sits high and who looks low, we thank you again for a gorgeous day and a gorgeous time of the year. We thank you for the work that will be done in this place this evening, and we pray that it will be done that will be pleasing in your sight. We thank for all those who are present tonight and for those who are still on their way. These are all the blessings I ask in his name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Tonight, we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mimi Becker. Ms. Becker, if you want to come up front. Ms. Atkins has a present? Yeah, of course, there's a present. There you go. Item one is the approval of the previous minutes, that being February the 12th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sears, Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion, additions, corrections? No corrections, no additions?
No.
Oh, we did. Well, let's do this, and we'll back up. All in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. As I'm reminded by the ever studious and decorum-minded commission here, I have skipped the two things. Commission, you have the agenda in front of you. I trust it meets with your approval. Also, we're in this section called Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any item that is on the agenda. Later on, there'll be another Hear the Public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So the floor is open, the microphone is yours to anyone that wants to speak on any item pertaining to tonight's agenda. I don't see a mad rush to the microphone, so we'll move right on. Since we've approved the minutes for item one, we'll go right on to item two. This is the retirement recognition of Mr. Ed Dubrovic. Parking, and I'm going to ask Ms. Bridget Lester to lead the charge here.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to let you know, Ed started working with the city in 2004, and at that time, he was under the police department because parking enforcement was over there. Then in 2005, we switched it all over to codes enforcement. Then in 2007, we opened the parking garage, and Ed has been there ever since. He has taken such good care of everything in the parking garage, and we will miss him terribly. Working with Ed has always been a pleasure. We've always appreciated your thoughtful, steady approach to solving any problem, large or small. He's proved that a loud voice doesn't -- it doesn't take a loud voice to accomplish tremendous things. And while we will miss you, we hope that you have an excellent and fulfilling retirement, and take the time to enjoy life. Ed's last day will be Wednesday, but we're going to keep celebrating the rest of the week for that. So Ed, if you would come on up, then we will...
Mr. Scott has some.
Ed, let me also join Bridget in thanking you for your many years of service. You have always been a cheerful person and have worked diligently and done a great job for us, and we really appreciate that. And I can say you were always there regardless of the weather, which was often a challenge as well during the wintertime. So we very much appreciate it, wish you well.
Yeah. Do you want to say something?
Short for words. But I'd like to say that during my almost 14 years here with the city, I've enjoyed working with all of the staff. I've gone through a lot of commissions, a lot of mayors. But I can say that I've really enjoyed my time. A lot of people think that being a parking officer is probably one of the nastiest jobs you can do, but I'll disagree with that. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of wonderful citizens here, a lot of wonderful visitors to the city, and I hope that I have been a symbol of the city to represent everybody. So for that, thank you so much.
And I've got to say that Ed's done a heck of a job because I've had the pleasure of paying for some parking tickets that you've written.
Without malice.
I didn't thank you personally. You did a nice job.
And Ed, it's been caught our attention, and we need to thank you for your service in the military as well, that career you had before you came to the city.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your service.
Come back and visit often.
Yes. I'm here, I'm living here, so.
It'd be funny if you get those tickets.
Thank you, Ed.
Next, item three is the pleasure of extending a proclamation to this year's 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football, Mr. Demaree Van Cleve. So I have the pleasure, and I gather Demaree is kind of a reserved individual. Is that correct?
No.
That just -- but you've got to get back up here and face these people just like you did before. Allow me to read this. Come right over here, because he's going to want a picture of you, see, just like that. "In honor of Demaree Van Cleve, 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football. Whereas Demaree Van Cleve has been named 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football and represents the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Danville High School, and the City of Danville as Kentucky's Mr. Football 2017, the City of Danville would like to acknowledge Mr. Van Cleve's accomplishments, and whereas Demaree has been awarded numerous awards throughout his high school career, including Courier-Journal First Team, All-State Wide Receiver, USA Today All-USA Kentucky First Team, All-State Defensive Back, KFCA Class 2A Player of the Year, Kentucky High School Athletic Association 2A State Championship Game Most Valuable Player, 2015-2017 Advocate Messenger Offensive Player of the Year, KFCA District Player of the Year, 2015, '16, and '17 Advocate Messenger All-Area First Team, Best of the Bluegrass All-Star Team, Border Bowl Participant, 2016 Courier-Journal Honorable Mention All-State Wide Receiver, 2016 Associated Press Honorable Mention All-State Defensive Back, 2016 KSR All-State Team Special Teams, and 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football. Mr. Van Cleve is an exemplary representative of our community and Danville High School. And whereas being an athlete and distinguished student at Danville High School, who will graduate in May of this year, proven Demaree Van Cleve to be an excellent role model to the youth of Danville and Boyle County. Mr. Van Cleve is applauded for his exemplary attitude and contributions both on and off the field, and whereas Demaree Van Cleve is commended for the honor and esteem he has brought to his family, school, and community. Therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City of Danville Board of Commissioners on February 26, 2018, do hereby congratulate Demaree Van Cleve on being named 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football, and urge all citizens to participate in celebration by congratulating him and thanking him for his contributions and mentorship to the youth of Danville, Boyle County, and wish him the best in his endeavors in the future." Well done, young man. You're going to run for president now, you've got all these accomplishments. That's yours, sir. Turn that around. Don't run off. Don't run off. We don't do this very often, but I think it's really appropriate that we extend this young man, because we don't get too many Kentucky footballs around here. Key to the city. It goes to Mr. Atkins' door. We're glad to have you. And we're going to Wofford? Hey, anything you want to say?
Tell them where you're going to school next year.
I'll be attending Wofford College for my four years. I just appreciate the support from the community, from Danville, throughout my four years, and from the school and everybody around me. It was a team effort. I wouldn't be where I am without my fans, my school, and my family. I just appreciate everything that everybody's done for me throughout my years being in Danville. I'm just thankful for my accomplishments, so. This is my dad, Richard Van Cleve, my mom, Daphne Van Cleve, my grandmother, Sandy, and my aunt Barbara. They're all here today supporting me. And Chase Broach, our security officer at Danville High School.
Well done, young man. And we look forward to you setting records down there in Wofford. Tear them up down there. All right. Once again, thank you for that opportunity. Well done.
Amen.
We'll get on with the business at hand. Item four is the report from CASA. Excuse me, let me back up. I guess action is needed on the proclamation for Mr. Van Cleve. Do I hear a motion?
A motion that we accept the proclamation into the record?
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Atkins. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, don't you dare. Item four is the report from CASA, Ms. Grant.
First, I want to say thank you all so much for the investment and partnership you make in CASA of the Bluegrass. For those of you in the room that don't know what CASA of the Bluegrass is, it's court-appointed special advocates, and we provide advocacy services for children who are abused, neglected in our local family court system. I wanted to give a little update on the numbers. So in calendar year 2017, we had 145 new children right here in our community who were introduced into the family court system due to abuse or neglect. These are new victims. So 145 children ages birth to 18 were introduced to the family court system. CASA of the Bluegrass provided advocacy services for over 100 of those local children. And we were able to help with case closure, which means finding a safe and permanent home, whether it's reunification, adoption, and things like that, for 44 of those children. So we are extremely proud of those numbers, and we couldn't do it without your all's investment and your help. In your packet, I included some county profile information that goes beyond what we do. So it's economic security, education, health, and family and community. And as it pertains to CASA, we seem to be lacking in one area in our county, and that's children in out-of-home care. Our rate has increased from 53.9 children per 1,000 in our county to 68.6 children per 1,000. So that is indicative of the children that are having to leave their biological homes and live in foster care most of the time due to abuse and/or neglect. And a large cause of that is the drug epidemic that's currently going on. We've seen an increase in cases. But for anyone that's interested in becoming a CASA volunteer, we have an orientation introduction meeting tomorrow night at 473 West Walnut, where you can come and learn about what being a CASA volunteer is all about. And before I end, I wanted to remind everyone that Kentucky is a mandatory reporting state. So if you know of abuse or suspect that abuse or neglect is occurring, it is your duty to report. And I'd like to give the hotline number. So once again, that's the reporting, the abuse hotline. So all citizens should report any suspicions of abuse or neglect. It could save a child's life. So I'm open to any questions at this time.
I guess my question would be, other than the hotline, is there anything that can be done to reduce the number of cases that you have?
I'd say 90% of the cases that we have in court right now are due to abuse, I mean, drug abuse. And we've got an opioid epidemic that's soaring right now in our community and in this region of the United States. And I would say if we could somehow reduce the drug epidemic, that would drastically reduce the number of children that are in court due to abuse and neglect. Otherwise, that's kind of the major causative factor at the moment, is the drug abuse. It's a domino effect, unfortunately.
Any questions from Ms. Grant?
Another comment. It's unfortunate that's happening and keeping you busy, and certainly, we've discussed it up here before, and the whole community's working on it, but we appreciate you working on behalf of those children.
Thank you.
I think we probably have one of the better CASA organizations in the state.
I'd like to think that we do.
Yeah, I think that's a testament to your energy and interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, Commission, you have a request from Rotary International to post a banner about the March 14, I think, Rotary International Dinner. Ms. Becker, glad to have you back with us.
Thank you. The Danville Rotary Club hosts the International Dinner each year. This year, it's on March 17. It's at Chowin on the Center College campus. This is our major fundraiser, and our fundraising efforts provide two things. Each year, we dedicate a significant portion of our fundraising to some type of capital improvement program, capital project, Humane Society, Senior Citizens Program, the park. So this year, actually, it will be a two-year commitment. We have committed $20,000 plus to the BCTC Advanced Manufacturing Facility project. So the major fundraiser is the International Dinner. We hope that many in the community will join us that evening. Still have openings for cooks and bartenders. If your star is trained, I welcome your volunteering. And we're requesting that we be allowed to hang a banner out front in the city hall. The banner was approved several years ago, and it just needs to have the date changed and the contact phone number changed for it to be basically its exact same banner.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and a third. Any further discussion?
I was going to ask if Mimi wouldn't mind just describing what the International Dinner is for those.
Well, thank you for asking.
Glad you asked.
Glad you asked. We fortunately have a lot of people in our community who like to cook. And we have different countries represented by volunteer cooks. So when a person purchases a ticket, they basically have free rein grazing of 20 to 25 countries cuisine. You know, we have France, and of course, we have sister cities, and we have Ireland, China, Tanzania, it goes on and on and on. And it's quite an evening. I have only been once, and I don't know what, they nailed me then for the chairmanship, but it's lots of fun. And you have a good opportunity to have some good food and good fun and support the Advanced Manufacturing Facility, which will benefit the multi-county area.
And how do we get tickets?
Call me.
Okay.
And my number will be on the banner, 691-0316, or ask any Rotarian. They can also direct you, perhaps.
The city will be hosting our state senator and representative?
It's usually a good crowd, 250 to 300 people.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I need two tickets.
Okay.
I need two tickets.
I got you.
I'm getting married that day, so I'll only get tickets.
Saying that, we have no further constructive conversation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mimi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the appointment recommendation in front of you for beautification. You can see that I'm recommending Brianna Faustrecher be reappointed as the Heart of Danville Representative to Beautification. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Get too many people one time, and nobody can answer. Nothing personal, Ms. Faustrecher.
No. No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, you have my recommendation to you on the Parks and Rec Board. This is an important position, maybe more so than many others. If you look at Dee Minor's resume, as well as her interest in the community's health and well-being, I think she would be an excellent, excellent candidate at this time for Parks and Rec. And I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'm moved to accept your recommendation of Dee Minor to the Parks and Rec Board.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a comment that I've known Dee for a long time, and she has a really good resume, is a very good candidate, and her and Janet Flutie have done a lot of great things for this community in terms of get moving Boyle County. I might just question, her being the director of McNally Wellness Center, is that a conflict with the Bunny Davis Center if she's on Parks and Rec?
We asked that question, and the vast majority of the wellness center is rehab. Rehab. The whole front part is rehab, the pool's rehab. Good question. We looked into it.
It's all rehab. They have a membership. You know, I think that this has come up before, certainly, and I think we ought to talk about it before we go forward with this. They do have a membership that is not rehab, so is it a conflict? I'm just throwing that out there.
There's certainly no legal conflict or ethical conflict. So there's no conflict as the law is concerned?
I'm just thinking out loud at the moment. I think if there, you know, Parks and Rec is, to me, programs and coaching and that type thing, and I don't see it as a conflict.
Any further questions, thoughts, or comments?
No.
I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
We'll move right on. Item eight is my recommendation to you for the Danville Architectural Heritage Board, and that is a reappointment of Mr. John W. D. Bowling. And I do so on the basis that, one, he wants to be reappointed, and, two, he is a landowner downtown, and I think that's important. Do I hear a motion?
I move for Mr. Bowling's reappointment to the Danville Architectural Heritage Board.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Atkins, discussion? I think no discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is my recommendation to you of Arnetta Myers to be reappointed to Ethics Board as an alternate member.
So moved to Ms. Myers's reappointment.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution regarding special events liability policy. It's Resolution 2018-022601. Turn the floor over to Counselor Dexter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we had a couple of questions with regard to liability issues, so we're not ready to present that tonight. Hopefully, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Works for me. With that said, we'll segue right into your report, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, I have two items. The first item is in your packet, and that is that I am recommending that the city commission approve the mayor to sign the attached letter, which would authorize the mayor to seek designation through the state and federal government of a local opportunity zone within Danville and Boyle County. I would say this is also a joint action anticipated jointly with Boyle County and Junction City. Basically, there's an opportunity that was brought to our attention fairly recently by the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development, that one of the federal laws passed in 2017, the Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017, otherwise known as Public Law 115-97, allows for a process whereby a governor of any state can nominate up to 25% of the census tracts within the state that qualify as low-income census tracts to be recommended by the governor to the U.S. Treasury Department for their consideration and designation as an opportunity zone. If that designation is achieved, it would allow private investors who might invest in the area to achieve a capital gains deferral of payment of capital gains over, I believe, either a five- or seven-year period of time. It's simply another tool to entice and to encourage private investment into an area that is deemed by the federal government's Census Bureau and the U.S. Treasury to be an economically deprived area, if you will, that is needing economic improvement. This application was, I want to shout out to Joe D. Lester and how good for helping to coordinate this application that would be sent to the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development, again, for their review and forwarding on to the governor for submission to the federal U.S. Treasury Department to consider that one zone in Danville, Boyle County would be deemed a, what did we call it?
Opportunities zone.
Historically bold opportunity zone, and there is no cost to the city, the county, or Junction City to apply. The zone is all tracts that would qualify under the federal law inclusive, and it begins roughly with an area that is designated as a low-income area north of city hall, down Fifth Street and up in that area. It proceeds through the downtown area, down Fourth Street, and generally, on either side of Fourth Street, down Houstonville Road, to and including areas around the airport into Junction City and on down into the Forklands area. So again, it's simply authorizing the mayor to seek the governor to designate that So, again, it's simply authorizing the mayor to seek the governor to designate that area as an opportunity zone, and it would demonstrate a, an interest on our community and our county and Junction City to try to encourage investment in that area.
Do you need a motion to that effect, sir? Chair will entertain a motion.
We'd ask that the motion accept the findings of the city manager's memorandum and approval of the letter that's attached there, too.
So moved. What he said.
We have a motion and a who's taking it?
I did.
Mr. Cottle, any discussion?
So, the, this zone takes in more than one census tract, then? I mean, it's not just-
Yes. It's every census tract that's contiguous that we could put into the zone. It may be a historically bold and large tract for the governor to consider, but it's all-inclusive rather than being discriminatory in the sense of, of tracts. In fact, there was a process outlined by the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development that would have allowed us to prioritize and to discriminate among the zones in terms of which might be first, second, and third, and so forth. But it was deemed in discussions that I had with the county judge and with the mayor of Junction City, we felt we'd be better off just combining it into a single large zone.
Okay. I misunderstood when I read it, I guess. I was thinking it, it was all one census tract, and I tried like heck to find a census tract that reached from Danville down to Junction City unsuccessfully, so I understand that. Thank you.
We had a, we had a, kudos to the Economic Development Partnership, and particularly Jody for carrying the load on this. I mean, we didn't have the bandwidth at City Hall to do it. We all agreed it was an excellent thing to do, but just couldn't get it done. Jody, Jody shouldered that one, and I think because we were able to get all of that done probably faster than most, I think we stand a pretty good chance of getting it. And we all had a very nice meeting this morning to get that done, and I like it when a plan comes together.
Very good.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign.
Mr. Mayor, the, the second item I would like to just briefly touch upon, which is not in your packet, is the fact that Pat Hoagland is proceeding with developing the final report on our master parks study. I would like to request that perhaps two commissioners, if they have an interest in, in working as we receive, and I have not received, sort of that preliminary sort of report, to join me in terms of, and Pat, in terms of reviewing that, as we begin to, to see what that report may look like. I would anticipate sometime in the future that we would have a full presentation for the city commission in a work session to review that report when it is received. Probably it will be received within the next month or roughly by April 1.
Mr. Cottle, you have a question?
No, I'd say, I'd like to-
Would you like to do that? Anybody else?
Unless we want to leave it to the commission on the-
I'd like to do it. My arm wrestle Rick over it.
And so would I.
Any problem with three?
Well, it becomes a quorum at that point, and that's the problem. So we would need your agreement or designation of two individuals to, just to participate in staff discussions.
Currently on board, that's fine. I'll step out.
Oh, Rick's on the board. I was gonna say, you know, you don't, you haven't gotten involved in a lot of the Parks and Rec stuff, so I thought maybe it'd be a good opportunity for you.
I'd like that, but again, not gonna knock you down for it.
And I'm just, I'm just getting my foot in the door on that also, so.
I would say, just as a commentary, if I may, for your consideration, this, there have been extensive discussions with affected groups and individuals within the community. We've had focus group discussions. I think Pat's interest here is perhaps having some additional input from others who have not been a party to the process, with all due respect to everyone that's been involved, and I have been involved early on in terms of being interviewed. But I think he's coming up with sort of a final runway approach, and he simply wants to have a little additional input on that.
Sure. Yeah, well, again, I'd like to be on it. You know, I was pretty, pretty involved with the original master plan, and, and been involved with some of the Trails Alliance activity and so forth, and watched this thing grow, so I'd like to see it continue to grow.
Looks like you get to pick.
Why you putting on me?
That's why you get the big money.
You get the big bucks.
Okay.
I'll do it. I don't get any bucks.
I say Ben-
Anybody else wanna do it?
No, 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 no. I was gonna make a motion to get this thing off the table. We need two people, right? All right.
Or I'll, or I will appoint, whatever you, whatever you want.
If you appoint, we-
Now, we don't want you to appoint, no. I say Siri and Cottle.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second. I don't want to, but I'm for the second is.
That's very sad.
That's very gracious. That's very gracious. Yeah, Rick, you owe her.
Yeah, you owe me.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign, motion carries. And for the record, it's, it's not like they're the only two that'll get to read it.
That's right.
Well, this is a good problem to have, though.
Absolutely.
Thank you all, that concludes.
Is that it?
Rick, I'll come around your house and see if Rick-
You made it to read mine.
We're now in that section of our meeting called "Here to the Public." As I promised earlier, this is the opportunity for the public to address the commission, the staff, and any particular item that is not on the agenda for tonight. I know we have one.
Yes. I'm gonna sit here. You might come to the mic.
We'll bring it to you.
We're gonna charge you, don't we?
I'm getting a lot of calls wondering when they gonna change Baywood Park to Michael M. Smith Memorial Park.
And identify yourself for the audience.
And my name is Margaret Calhoun.
Ms. Margaret, if I may interrupt, we are working on that sign. I know Erica worked on it last week. Erica and I think Donna was helping her advisor maybe a little bit on the text, and so that's active, and with the weather turning, it's getting in front of us a little bit, we're a little slow, and I apologize for that, and that's on us, me.
Yeah. Okay.
But would you, would you venture a deadline?
It'd take less than a month. It, a lot of times, the production of it's just a couple of weeks. It's a matter of Erica getting quotes, that usually takes a week. Getting in the design, getting quotes, a couple of weeks, and a couple of weeks to get the sign. So we're looking at about a month, realistically.
And I would like to suggest that we not just go and put a sign down, that we do some kind of little-
Ceremony.
Ceremony. Dedication to, and get a chance to invite his family in and-
Yes.
And unveil him.
Great suggestion.
When we come back in, in the next commission meeting, we'll, we'll try to have a precise date on the sign for you, and then that way you all can make an informed decision.
Will that be the first Monday or the fourth Monday?
Second Monday.
Second Monday.
Second Wednesday.
Second Monday. Okay, second Monday, okay.
That means you'll be here?
Oh, yeah.
We like having you. Anyone else? Wilma.
I thought she was gonna take it to Wilma.
That'd be all right. I was here two weeks ago, and I was expressing my concern over how the consultant, the TIF consultant, Mr. James Parsons, was hired, and at the time, he was hired for $20,000-plus dollars of taxpayers' money. Mr. Scott had not put that on the agenda, nor had he put it in the packets for review by the city commissioners. So at this time, I have two other concerns about that particular procedure. One has to do, one is in the letter of agreement between Mr. James Parsons to Ron Scott for agreement with the city of Danville. And Mr. Parsons starts out saying, "It was great seeing you again," and to learn about the city of Danville's plans for downtown redevelopment, which I was questioning what downtown plans for redevelopment. And then also, when Mr. Parsons was here a week and a half ago, he brought it up again, and he said, "You are in the process right now of developing a downtown project." So I'm wondering if the city, the commissioners are in the process of developing a downtown project, or where that information came from. So that's one question I had. The other one has to do with, with the contract or the, the letter of agreement. Mr. Parsons was not hired for his consultant services, he was hired for his legal services, even though what he is doing right now has nothing to do with legalities. The information he gave us was public information, it wasn't legal information. He presented in a cogent manner, certainly, but it was not legal information. Also, if he makes recommendations to the commission on what you should do about a TIF program, that certainly will be an informed decision or recommendation, but not a legal recommendation until he gets into the documents. The problem with this is that the city has already called for attorney-client privilege where it comes to, to Mr. Parsons and his communications with anybody in the city, thereby keeping any taxpayer from finding out what the communication is at this point, even though these are basically consultant services and should be open to review by citizens. So these are some comments I have on this particular, this particular consultants, consultant, I have no problem with Mr. Parsons himself, just about some of the procedures and some questions surrounding this. And as a taxpayer, I feel it's not only my right to be up here, but my responsibility to question these expenditures.
Thank you, Wilma. Anyone else? Mr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Steve Knight. The reason why I'm is here tonight, I believe it was on February 12th, may have been 13th, I can give you the exact date, approximately 10:30 in the morning, I was driving north on 127, started out in Casey County, got behind an individual that certainly seemed that they may have been impaired, driving, followed this individual through Lincoln County into Boyle. In Lincoln County, I'd talked to their 911, they didn't think they could get anyone to the scene, so they transferred me to Boyle 911. And communication with them, as we were coming into Boyle County, they basically took the information I gave them, which was where we were at, description of the vehicle, license plate number, and they hung up the phone. So, followed that on a little bit further into town, didn't see anybody, I responded at Junction, followed it all the way up to the bypass intersection, still nobody responded, so I turned head north on the bypass, I called back to 911 and gave them that information where the location was. Again, hung up the phone, didn't stay on the phone with me to get additional information. This continued all the way through to Mercer County, and Mercer County, when I, I called them, they stayed on the phone with me, they couldn't get somebody over there in time till this individual got all the way to Lawrenceburg, where Anderson County Sheriff's Department finally pulled this individual over that had been seriously weaving and was dangerously driving on the road. And I find it somewhat disturbing because pulling the records, I did open records requests and counting the chief on down, there were 11 officers total on duty in Boyle County citywide, and two sheriffs, leaving a total of 13 officers that could potentially have responded to that incident, since I'd been on the phone since Casey County, and stayed, tried to stay on the phone. Boyle County is the only one 911 center that hung up, everybody else stayed on the phone with me. I find that to be a serious issue. And it's not the first time this has happened. As you know, my son was hit and killed out in Junction 2016, so I'm a little sensitive to distracted drivers and that sort of thing, and so this is not the first time that I've had this issue in Boyle, where they've hung up, not followed up, no one has responded. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, because I do think that we have a issue in this county with failure to respond appropriately in some of these situations.
Thanks for your input. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Moving right on to commissioner comments. Anybody have any?
Sure. I give a shout-out to the Heart of Danville for bringing Concert and the Park back. I think that's gonna be excellent, and be concert on the plaza now, won't it, Whizzer? So, good for you on that. I also attended Convention Visitors Bureau meeting this morning. I'm impressed with that group, they're getting some things done. They heard some requests for money from Parks and Rec. It looks like a lot of sports tourism is moving our direction, that's very positive. And certainly Brass Band was there, which is a big positive for our community, so I just bring positives. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone?
I have a few positives as well, and mine are, I'm trying to continue my education of the public to the fact that 2018, all year long, I'm celebrating Black History. I celebrate it every day of my life, but there's some, some really neat people in Danville and Boyle County that I want to call to our attention tonight. One just left us, so surely everybody will get this question right. The 2017 Kentucky Mr. Football for all classes statewide from Danville High School. You just met Demarie Vencliff. But I also asked you a question. Name the first Danville High School African-American female to be awarded a Division One Athletic Scholarship. She still lives in Danville. She was a track runner, did the hurdles, and did lots of other crazy things, and she currently drives the school bus for Danville.
Stahlworth.
Lavanda Stahl.
No, not Stahlworth, no.
It was a Ford.
Yeah, Sadie, Sadie Gamrell.
Sadie, yeah.
Yeah, Sadie, yeah.
I thought it was a Ford.
And somebody asked me to, to highlight Mr. William Bunny Davis, and I said, "Well, Dick, I don't want to highlight Bunny Davis, because everybody knows all about him already." But anyway, here's the fact about Bunny Davis. He's one of the first Black men to play semi-professional baseball on the first integrated baseball team in the entire southern part of the United States. I didn't realize that. But the other thing is that I thought, I think Bunny was one of the first African-American officials in the Southeastern Conference. And then this other young lady, because I'm an educator, I taught one year at McVill, I taught three years at Parksville, and then I spent my last 43 years teaching at Bates School. Wow, I know that's stonking, right? That's Ms. Lillian Jones. Think about that, 46 years elementary education in Danville and Boyle County. Okay? And then the last one tonight, I was a nurse and an educator who wrote poems published in the 1960s and the 1970s. Two of my most noted ones were "Ode to Spudamordrude," in the drugstore on Main Street, and then "Heaven in Danville, Kentucky." Yeah, she was named Lucille Brumfield Powers, and my source for that was Bates School chatterboxes, so that was a really, I know it wouldn't, but just really, oh, and I do have a copy of this cabinet, if you take a look at here, all right? But it's really some interesting people, African-American folks who were born and raised, or born and moved out of Danville, but did some amazing things in their, their lifetime. There's just a few of them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, wait, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thursday? This Thursday, March 1st, at 5:30? We're having the first public committee meeting of the ML King 50th Anniversary Celebration at 5:30 here at City Hall. We've invited some people to attend, but we also call it a public meeting, so anyone in the audience, or anyone that listens to the broadcast is welcome to come Thursday at 5:30 in this location to help us plan a non-commercialized celebration for ML King's 50th commemoration of his assassination.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving along to item 12, this is the payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. It's your earliest opportunity. Chair will accept a motion or approve.
I move.
We have a motion and a second.
Pay the bills, favor 26.
Any discussion?
We need to announce the amount.
I like to say the amount, yeah.
2,000, I mean, $204,333.72.
Second.
Motion made, second, and comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign, motion carries. Item 13 is a budget report from Michelle Gossner.
Hello.
Hello.
We have for you the second quarter budget report, which is the first half of the year. the year. Again, this is just.
Hey, Michelle? Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, I'm so short. I can't see over it.
It wouldn't over, Rick.
That'll be better. It's a snapshot in time of what it was at the time that we ran the report, and as you can see on here, the general fund is down 8.61 percent from the budget. That's due mostly because we budgeted for the increase that we knew was happening October 1st. We have not seen those results yet. There's no worry there. It will come through to the second half of the year. The general fund expenditures, though, the operating expenditures, we have held off on some of our operating expenditures until the second half of the year when the income is coming in, and so we're at, we have a nice operating positive variance on that. So, it gives an overall variance for the general fund, $505,000. Now, it needs to be noted that we have budgeted to spend funds this year that were carryover. As you got your audit report last year, it said that, you know, we had a carryover. It was very close to what we anticipated that we would have during the budget process, and we have budgeted to spend most of those funds this year. Municipal aid, as you know, we do two things, paving, we have finished one paving, and the spring paving list will come up in the spring. We also have budgeted in that but have not done it yet, the Second Street Bridge, and we are supplementing. That's what the transfer from the general fund is to supplement most of that. The Stormwater Fund is right on target with both expenditures and revenues. We are only doing small projects in this fund due to we haven't raised it and haven't borrowed any more money since the very beginning. Garbage Fund, again, is right on key with what we thought it would be, and it's also supplemented with the general fund money. The utility fund has, it's showing a positive variance in income right now of 9.26 percent, which isn't much, but it's a little bit, and that's due to that we did get our sewer rates, so we're not in the negatives anymore. They've also done a good job at doing the operating expenditures, showing $262,983 in the good variance to that, leaving $657,000. The parket fund, again, is another fund that we do supplement with the general fund. As you can see, we make monthly transfers over to that. The revenues are what we thought they would be. They're at 8.82 percent of budget, and operating expenditures are at, are, have a nice positive variance. We're waiting to the end, the second half of the fiscal year, when it gets a little bit warmer, to do some repairs that we did budget for there. You have an overall negative revenue variance, but most of that comes from your general fund, and we've already discussed reason that is, that you have a nice operating variance that, that's from, you know, things being held off, and then plus your staff doing a very good job of not overspending to spending just what they need and not overspending when they don't need it.
I have a question, but it's for Earl more than Michelle. What, what's our next big stormwater project? Do we, you know, back when we did that master plan, we had $10 million worth of stuff we were going to work on, and how, how are we doing?
We're working, we have a project identified for Main Street down on the east end. We, we've got to bring that up with, really, the city manager at this point, and then we're getting ready to, we wanted to schedule the mini-basin that is in the Streamland watershed. We wanted to schedule those public meetings last fall, and with other, other things that conflicted with it, we could never really work it out with the consultant and everybody that needed to be involved. We're, Erica's working on that now. So, it'd be the Streamland watershed not determined yet, and then we have a project identified, but the scope of it not dialed in, partly because of cost. We're trying to figure out the limits of, of the project for the East Main area.
Thank you.
Michelle, you may have said this, but how much money was transferred out of the general fund into the municipal aid fund to, for road repairs?
The road repairs, we have about $200,000 budgeted, but we also are transferring money also for, to just offset the municipal aid money that we're not getting now. So, that's a two-fold thing. Right now, we've transferred $187,500. That's going to be, we'll continue to do that until the end of the fiscal year.
I see.
To do monthly transfers. That'll count, that'll take care of the, the bridge and for what we're supplementing.
I don't believe we need a motion to accept this report, do we?
No, it's informational only.
Any questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Item 14 is the second reading of ordinance number 1911. This is in regards to sewer limits. Madam Clerk, you want to read it again?
This is the second reading of ordinance 1911, an ordinance amending City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance, Section 18-56E pertaining to sanitary sewer industrial discharge limits and Section 18-83 pertaining to monthly sewer service charges for industrial customers.
Yes, ma'am?
I was going to move to approve. You ready for that?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance 1911, the second reading.
Motion made in second?
Second.
Commissioner Sears, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Anything from the legal side that would put us in executive session?
No, sir. I did want to mention to you that the report I'm compiling on the dilapidated structures, I hope to have finalized by the second meeting in March. It's a comprehensive undertaking, but that's, my goal is the second meeting in March, may push to April, but I'm doing my best to do it by the end of March, just as an FYI.
Anything else from anyone? You mean we're going to get in and out of here under an hour? Somebody, somebody, I'm not used to this.
It's starting raining, though.
A motion to adjourn?
Do, here, a motion to adjourn, made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you.
Can we move to go into executive session?